Thank you all. We now are to the section of our agenda for awards. We have a couple of proclamations this evening. First one is the National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week proclamation. I'd like to read this out loud if they'd like to join us in the room here. So I'd like to go ahead and read this proclamation. Whereas when our community faces a crisis, whether on an individual level or on a massive scale, when seconds count and the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property, public safety telecommunicators stand ready to answer the call 24 hours a day. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the skill of our public safety telecommunicators in obtaining accurate information from citizens who contact the Raymore Police Department Communication Center. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are first responders in the truest sense, but often go unheralded for the critical role they play in the success of any police, fire, or EMS call for service. And whereas, public safety telecommunicators are a vital link for police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the public safety telecommunicators of the Raymore Police Department contribute immeasurably to the safety of our community by demonstrating compassion, understanding, and professionalism each day in the performance of their duties, now therefore I, Christopher P. Turnbow, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through 17th, 2021, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the City of Raymore in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Raymore to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2021. And whereas, when the health and welfare of animals in the City of Raymore is at stake, animal control professionals are needed to ensure the safety and well-being of both domestic and wild animals. And whereas, the safety of our citizens is dependent upon the skills of these professionals to assist the community in providing a disease-free, nuisance-free environment through enforcement and education. And whereas, the animal control personnel of the Raymore Police Department often risk life and limb to protect the citizens and animals of this community. And whereas, many animals, both domestic and wild, owe their lives to the unwavering efforts of animal control personnel that have rescued them from injury, disease, abuse, and starvation by providing necessary food, shelter, and medical attention. And whereas, the animal control officers of the Raymore Police Department have contributed substantially to the overall safety of our community by demonstrating compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their duties, now therefore I, Christopher P. Turnbow, Mayor of the City of Raymore, do hereby proclaim the week of April 11th through 17th, 2021, as National Animal Control, National Animal Care and Control Appreciation Week in the City of Raymore in honor of the women whose diligence and professionalism keep our city, citizens, and animals safe and witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Raymore to be affixed this 12th day of April, 2021. We really do have a great team of people. It's very humbling to see such a great team that we have together here. Now move on to staff reports. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report for Development Services.
Thank you, sir. Two items this evening to go over. First, permit activity is very strong this year. We're ahead of where we were last year in new home construction and even the miscellaneous construction, the miscellaneous permits that we issue. So it's a great start to the spring. And then looking at the calendar, we have several upcoming meetings. First one will be next Tuesday, April 20th. Our Board of Adjustment will meet at 6:00 PM. They'll be considering an appeal of an enforcement order for property that's located at 400 North Park Drive. Our Planning Commission meeting that evening has been canceled. The items that were on the agenda were asked to be moved two weeks by the applicant. So the next meeting of the Planning Commission will be May 4th. They have quite a few items on their agenda. They'll consider the first final plat, the Parkside subdivision. This is Joe Duffy subdivision there at just south of 163rd Street, south of Creekmore. And then they'll also have the final plat for the park land that they're required to dedicate. That was the 10-plus acre park there on the north side of 163rd, right at North Madison Street. They'll also have the Eastbrook at Creekmore, second final plat. They're wanting to start their second phase. And the final plat for the venue of the Good Ranch, that's the townhome project that just got started construction there. They just need to do their final plat. Then we'll also have what was scheduled for May 4th is being pushed to May 18th. That is a new subdivision proposed. It's called Prairie at Carroll Farms. That will be a rezoning of the land. It's currently zoned agricultural, so they're going to look to rezone it to R1, which is single-family residential. This is part of the property that's owned by Dr. Carroll. It's about 146 acres. It actually surrounds the Timber Creek Elementary School, so they're between the Cumberland Hills subdivision and Curswell Road. So it's a proposed 312-lot, single-family subdivision. It's basically our standard R1 larger lots, single-family subdivision. Again, that's planned for May 18th Planning Commission. There will be a Good Neighbor meeting. We're just sending out notices tomorrow on that. It's scheduled for April 28th at Centerview. So we'll be notifying those neighbors that live close to that property of that Good Neighbor meeting. That's at 6:30. Again, on the 28th, at Centerview. So those are the upcoming applications that we currently have under review, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Jim. Lot going on. Anybody have any questions of staff? Thank you, sir. Mr. Fearborn.
Thank you, Mr. Catterett. Very excited for this next staff report. Long time coming since COVID got started, but have Mr. Mustine and Ms. Harmer here to talk about upcoming summer events for the City of Raymore, finally.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. We are very excited to give you this full list of summer events that will be put on through Parks and the Raymore Arts Commission. We have, I mean, really, it's 2020 for the Arts Commission. They did a great job in keeping people engaged. They put out a coloring book. We gave out Little Free Library grants. We had one in-person outdoor concert. There was also a virtual holiday sing-along. So we feel like with what we had thrown at us, the Arts Commission did a great job, but we really want to focus on people being able to gather together again this summer. So in front of you all, you have a summer, first and third Thursday night concert schedule. All of these will be at the Amphitheater. We even have a bonus concert on there for September with a full 45-piece American Legion Band of Greater Kansas City performance. And also, Summer Scene is back, and it's back at its original home at TB Hannah Station on Saturday, July 24th, from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. We'll have the return of the Relax in Raymore Adirondack Chair Art Competition, food trucks, beer and wine. Councilman Behrensen, I know that's good. Yeah, just for you. And we will also have our steel drum band. I don't know if any of you made it to that performance. I remember a few council members being at that performance. We'll have them back for the duo again at one of our summer concerts at the Amphitheater, and then we're going to have the full steel drum band quartet opening for us at Summer Scene. And then we'll have some improv comedy, improv games with the audience with the Dollar Menu Comedy. And then our headliners, I'm really excited about, is like folk blues, old country, bluegrass, the Amarouja Ridge Runners that are from Cass County also. And there's another, we have a fundraiser concert for the Hawksnest Inclusive Playground. We're partnering with the Southland Conservatory of Music. That's on Saturday, July 31st in the evening. So full summer, really excited, and it's been so fun to work on something that is not related to COVID for the first time in a long time. So also, and the Arts Commission has a, we're coming out with a little passport book so everyone can keep updated and get their events stamped when they come to our events, and we're also partnering with Parks on that. So we're really looking forward to our little passport that's coming out. And I will turn that over to Nathan. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yeah, we wanted to showcase some of the events that we're doing. Obviously, as you can see on the list, we have several of our standard events that we've been doing for years, and we're really excited to bring those back. It was one of those things where you hate to miss those last year. So first and foremost, our Spirit of America will be on July 2nd, right before the Fourth Holiday. Looking forward to having that back. We are going to take advantage of our new spray ground and playground at TB Hannah Station. First of all, we'll kick off the grand opening on May 26th, then you all will each receive an invitation to that event. We'll have some special guest speakers, specifically Variety KC Charities will be there to help us grand open that event. And then we have an event scheduled later in the summer specifically geared towards the spray ground with the Snack and Splash, so looking forward to that. The Mini Mud Run is back. My guys are really excited about that. That's one of the events that they get into, like to build those obstacles, so we're very excited about that. And that's a great opportunity for a community volunteer, for civic groups and other folks to come out and help us with that. We have about 11 scheduled events there. We have two more joint ones with the Arts Commission. It's a great partnership that we work together very well with them, and it's not even just listing them as joint partners with those, but we also share resources. We help each other out, set up, and things like that, so it's a shared experience all throughout the summer. One thing to note is that with all of these events, we'll follow all the guidelines in place at the time of the event. We want to make sure everybody's safe and everybody is having a great time, but most importantly, we want to get back out there and start providing some events for the community. And with that, happy to answer any questions, but that concludes our staff report for the evening.
Awesome. Great summer for us. I'm looking forward to it myself. Anybody else have anything or any questions, any comments? Mr. Townsend.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Yes, very busy summer coming up and a lot of outstanding activities and things. Just a quick question on the Spirit of America. I'm assuming this is probably just because of the COVID that we're finally getting it back to it. I thought that we usually did this the Saturday before, the week before, the actual Fourth weekend.
Yes, sir. It's actually, it's always the Saturday before is what we have changed to, where we were able to renegotiate the show and provide a bigger show for that by not having it on that specific date. This particular vendor has been very gracious and very easy to work with us, especially during this time of COVID. And instead of putting it on the weekend before the Fourth, the Fourth is on a Sunday this year, so I talked to them last week and asked if we could move that up and be a little closer to the weekend and still not be on the Fourth, and they've allowed us to use that Friday night so folks can still come out and still have their holiday weekend, but we can be a little closer to the actual date.
Excellent. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Mr. Fearborn, anything else?
Thank you. Yes, I would ask Chief Zimmerman to make a report for Police Emergency Management.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Communications and Animal Control after the two proclamations and the recognition of their hard work by the council. Some of this is information that, you know, we discussed previously in the work session where I reported all that they do, but I just want to reiterate, in Communications, nearly 50,000 calls in 2020 that those folks downstairs answered, handled, forwarded, dispatched on, which resulted in nearly 36,000 CAD events. For those of you who, you know, understand that, you know, we create an event when that call comes in so that the officers can be dispatched, we can track their movement, we can track what the disposition of that call was. So, you know, that requires the creation of an event in our system. So nearly 36,000 CAD events being created from that, almost 50,000 calls. And of those 50,000 calls, nearly 10,000 of those calls were emergency calls. So 911 where someone is in dire need of assistance from the police, the fire, EMS, you know, for those individuals to hear and dispatch to handle those calls. And you'll maybe remember me saying, when I reported on this before, that it's not necessarily the number of calls, but it's the complexity of the call. It's the type of call and the type of emergency that those individuals are required to handle that makes their job so special. And I didn't have experience with this prior to coming to Raymore, but of course, because our dispatchers also dispatch fire and EMS, they are all EMD-trained. And you will recall that there have been occasions where we've recognized dispatchers because they have saved lives by providing that important information to individuals who had, someone was in a medical crisis. So in those moments and seconds, you know, until someone could get there to actually assist in person, it's the dispatchers downstairs that are providing that life-saving information so that the individual that's on scene can perhaps save the life of their loved one. So they are very, very special people, and I often can't say enough about the job that they do. And we're going to be talking a little bit more at a future meeting about a recent call that was very confusing and very complex, the shooting at 58 and Crest, but we'll be bringing that to you all in a future meeting. And then lastly, I want to talk about Animal Control. And you may recall me talking about the number of impounds that Animal Control handled in 2020, over 700, about 720 impounds during 2020 alone. And probably the thing that I am the most proud of, and you hear it, and I see it a lot if you follow them on Facebook or things like that, how the community is so supportive of the job that they do because they're not just responding to calls, they're proactively outworking in the community to make sure that animals get rescued. And I had the opportunity to talk with a citizen recently and provided a letter of commendation for both Jamie and Bailey for the job that they had done in which an individual just moved away and abandoned a lot of animals at the house that they moved away from. And so, you know, Jamie and Bailey, and I think it's important to note that this was actually in an unincorporated part of the county in which they responded and they helped find homes for those animals. I think there was a rooster involved, but, you know, find homes for all of those animals, and they have become the standard. You will see, and I hear frequently, that other animal control operations all throughout the metropolitan area and beyond modeled their programs after what our folks do here. And so I couldn't be prouder of both of those units because they really do set the standard for all the folks around us. So that's all I have.
Thank you. I know that Peculiar really likes having us take care of him now. I've heard several comments from folks complimenting us on that. Anything else, Mr. Fearborn?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of items. Would first like to recognize...
I'm sorry, I forgot to ask if anybody had any questions of the chief, comments or anything additional. Sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. And thank you, Chief. You know, we always kind of joke around, and I can tell on her, because she always tells on herself, that there's regular human minutes, and then there's the chief talking minutes. But in this case, she can't say enough about those two departments, for sure. So I would like to recognize tonight Ms. Erica Hill to my left. She has, and congratulate her, and ask the council to join me in congratulating her on receiving the Municipal Government Institute Certification Program Award. So congratulations.
Congratulations, yes. That's awesome.
In keeping with the report that we heard from Mr. Mustine and Ms. Harmer, wanted to let the council know that we will be opening city buildings to, right now, we have the, if you're passing through a hallway or in movement wearing a mask, we will be lifting that requirement, so you'll see the signs come off of our buildings. Of course, people should feel perfectly, our employees and people coming into the buildings should feel perfectly comfortable still wearing a mask. There's never a problem with that and will probably exist for time eternal from here on out. But did want to let the council know ahead of informing our employees tomorrow morning. I will be sending an email to them. The third item that I have is next week's work session, the April 19th work session. We have a single item on right now. Again, another item that we're very excited to present to the council. It will be a full report with, almost like a Good Neighbor meeting, but for the council on everything that we're going to be doing and all the schematics for Ward Road. Really neat stuff to be taking a look at. So we'll be doing that for the entirety, and because these things are so huge, like they spread across all these tables, we're going to have them hang up, and we're working on the mechanics, the technical mechanics of the council being able to move through the room and take a look at those, because it will be kind of an open house type setting for that particular work session. That concludes staff reports this evening.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any questions? Mr. Fearborn. Okay. Thank you, sir. We have no committee reports tonight, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have three items. I would entertain a motion to dispose of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item A, City Council Minutes for March 22nd, 2021. Item B, Johnston Lake Foundation Fountain Project Acceptance and Final Payment. And Item C, Appointment of Ben Bailey to the Board of Adjustments.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Congratulations to Mr. Bailey on his appointment to the Board of Zoning Adjustment. We'll now move on to unfinished business. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3605 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3605 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with public water supply District Number 10 of Cass County, Missouri, for mutual cooperation, including termination of water service for non-payment of sewer bills.
Thank you. This was discussed in work session, so I would entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve Bill 3605 Mutual Cooperation Agreement with Water District 10.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3605. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3606 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3606 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Digital Alley for the purchase and installation of body-worn and in-car cameras in the amount of $177,849.40, and to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve Bill 3606 Award of Contract Body and Dashboard Cameras.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I will second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3606. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Thank you. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3607 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3607 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating and internal service budgets.
Just related to the previous item, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve Bill 3607 Budget Amendment Body and Dash Camera Purchase.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3607. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Could I please have the second reading of Bill 3608 by title only?
The second reading of Bill 3608 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2021 budget to reflect changes in the adopted 2020 through 2021 employee salary range chart.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve Bill 3608 Budget Amendment Personnel.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the second reading of Bill 3608. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Now move on to new business. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3610 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3610 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, vacating a portion of a utility easement located on Lot 178 in Edgewater at Creekmore Sixth Plat, a subdivision in the City of Raymore, Cass County, Missouri.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report on this agenda item.
I generally open the, this requires a public hearing. I generally open the public hearing at this time and ask for a staff report. Mr. Catterett, your cue.
Thank you, sir. Richard Rhodes, who represents ALH LLC, is requesting to vacate 10 feet of a 25-foot-wide utility easement that's located in the rear yard of a property at 813 Bridgeshire Drive. ALH is the builder of the home, is currently under construction on the property. The future homeowner is desiring to construct a ding-gram pool on the property that would extend, encroach into the rear yard easement area by about eight feet. So the request is to vacate the 10 feet of that easement, which would leave a 15-foot utility easement still on the property. There's no existing utilities located within the easement area to be vacated, and if approved, again, a 15-foot-wide easement area will remain for any future utility installation. We did contact all utility companies on this request to verify that no utilities are impacted. Staff does recommend approval of the request.
Thank you, sir. And so the HOA at Creekmore is good with that?
Yes, sir.
I assume?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions of staff? Hearing none. Because there is a public hearing on this item, anyone that wishes to address the council on this particular issue at this time, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. Try to keep your comments five minutes or less. I see no one coming forward, so I will close the public hearing at this time and ask again if there are any questions of staff on this. If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3610, easement vacation of 813 Bridgeshire Drive.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3610. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight-zero. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3611 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3611 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the city manager to enter into a street design reimbursement agreement with Parkside LLC to design a portion of the extension of Sunset Lane.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Catterett to make a staff report on this agenda item.
Thank you, sir. As part of the 2020 general obligation bond issue that voters approved, part of that was the extension of Sunset Lane from its current terminus to the Raymore Market Center, which is the Raymore Price Chopper. North to... Center, which is the Raymore Price Chopper, north to its intersection with the future extension of 163rd Street. The bond issue also included extending 163rd Street from where it stops in the Westbrook and Creekmore subdivision to where Sunset Lane will intersect it. Parkside LLC, which is Joe Duffy, is preparing to develop the Parkside subdivision. I mentioned earlier that they've already filed for the first final plat. And the Parkside subdivision is where a portion of the Sunset Lane improvements, either adjacent to or the Sunset Lane, will cross through the subdivision. The developer desires to commence design of the road improvements and then ultimately construction in advance of the city's schedule for design and construction of the remaining portion of Sunset Lane. So Parkside LLC is requesting a reimbursement agreement to expedite the design and again the construction of the road, of those portions of the road that are adjacent to or cross through their subdivision. Staff does recommend approval of Bill 3611. We do know that this is going to take some coordination with the design firm that's going to do the city's portion, if you would, the remaining portion of Sunset Lane, which is also on your agenda this evening. So those two engineering firms will obviously have to coordinate with each other on the design, make sure the road connects evenly and smoothly. We have full belief that that could happen and we support the advancement of this portion of the road design. So that concludes staff report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Catterett? Mr. Abdelwad?
Just a quick question. How many lots or how many homes are going to be in that subdivision? Do you know that?
Overall, it was around 300 plus overall. I know the first phase coming in is right at 50 lots.
Anyone else? Thank you, Jim. If there's no further discussion, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3611 Sunset Lane Design Reimbursement Agreement.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I will second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3611. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight zero. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3612 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3612 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the city manager to enter in an agreement with Custom Lighting Services LLC, DBA, Black &amp; McDonald to provide street light maintenance services.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a staff report on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what you have before you this evening is a maintenance contract for our streetlight network. The majority of the work involved with this contract is a monthly patrol of the city and then replacing any, any missing streetlights. It also includes repairs. We have, quite often, conductors between the streetlights go bad. Black &amp; McDonald makes those repairs as well. They, they have been providing this service for us since we took over the streetlight network for Kansas City Power and Light, currently now Evergy, and we do recommend award of this contract to them. That concludes staff report.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of Mr. Crass? If there are none, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3612 Award of Contract Street Light Maintenance.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. The motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of 3612. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight zero. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3613 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3613 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Cook Flat and Strobel Engineers for the Sunset Lane/Hawkeridge Park, City Project Number 20-010, in the amount of $368,423, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, sir. I would ask Mr. Crass to make a staff report on this agenda item.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. City staff issued a combined request for qualifications for both the improvements to Sunset Lane and Hawkeridge Park, both projects which were approved by the voters as part of the general obligation bond. After a series of interviews, first of all, we got a very good response to that request for qualifications, a lot of well-qualified firms. After a considerable series of, of interviews, we are recommending that we retain the services of Cook Flat and Strobel for this, this design engagement. Michelle Mahoney, the project manager with Cook Flat and Strobel, is in the office, in the chambers here, if you have any questions in particular, but we are looking forward to this, this project. We are excited about the park component. We are excited about the inner, interconnection with Sunset Lane, and as I said, we do recommend approval of their engagement. That concludes staff report.
And the city manager is very excited because by combining the projects, we save money.
Thank you. Mike, I've got a question. So the, so the road itself, will it require any reconstruction of existing pavement that's there or just kind of addition to and connection with?
There'll probably be a little minor work to blend in when we, thank you. The project starts at the current terminus where Compass Health left off. There's always a little minor work at the interface just to make a smooth transition, but it will not require any other reconstruction of existing Sunset Lane.
Great. Thank you. And sorry to keep bugging you, but how far down does it go before it makes a turn for the parking lot, the new parking lot? Do you know how, how far, how far is the, is this section from, of Sunset from where it's at right now down to 163rd? Just to kind of give people a picture of it.
The, the overall segment is, is just under a half, just under a half mile. The, the parking lot for the amphitheater will be just north and east of the, of the parking lot. It's of, of the amphitheater, kind of where the trail makes a bend in the northeast corner there. That's the general location where the parking lot will be.
It's probably almost about halfway down the road. If it's a half mile, it's probably a quarter mile down, but it's almost kind of split that length of roadway there?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? If there are no more questions, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move that we approve the first reading of Bill 3613 Award of Contract Sunset Lane and Hawkeridge Park Improvements.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3613. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight zero. Could I please have the first reading of Bill 3614 by title only?
The first reading of Bill 3614 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri authorizing an amendment to the fiscal year 2021 capital budget.
Thank you. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would ask Mr. Mustine to make the staff report.
Thanks, sir. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight's budget amendment is directly related to the previous bill that we just passed. This is, originally, the projects at Hawkeridge Park were identified as two separate projects and we had budgeted them to be in two separate fiscal years. By combining them into this one contract, it is necessary to advance funding for the design purposes of one of those projects. That is what this budget amendment is about tonight. So happy to answer any questions, but that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Nathan. Any questions of Nathan? Anything additional on that, Mr. Fearborn?
No, sir.
Okay. Then if there's nothing else, I'd entertain a motion to dispose of this item.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Townsend.
I move we approve the first reading of Bill 3614 Budget Amendment Hawkeridge Park Design Services.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the first reading of Bill 3614. Any further discussion? Mr. Abdelwad?
Just real quick, just a comment, maybe a little delayed. I probably should have said this on the previous one, but I have to admit that after I read through all the information in the packet, I was relieved to know that the same company planning our streets were not actually planning the park, but the parking lot at the park because I thought, what an odd combination when I just read the agenda for tonight. So, thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion? Motion carries unanimously, eight zero. Thank you. We'll now move on to public comments. If anyone from the public in the, in the audience would like to address the council at this time, please step forward, state your name and address for the record and try to keep your comments five minutes or less. I see no one stepping forward, so we'll move on to the mayor council communication. And I'll start with Mr. Barrenson tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me think and compose myself here. I wasn't ready for this. Obviously, we'll, we'll thank the, the people we recognized earlier tonight, the dispatch and the animal control personnel. I've dealt with them all individually on my, on my own in the past and, and very professional and we couldn't run the city without them. Also, I'd like to congratulate my fellow council members on their recent elections and thank the voters of Raymore's Ward Four for voting for me. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Abdelwad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll echo some of the things Councilmember Barrenson said. Congrats to my fellow council members who've been reelected. I look forward to serving another year with you. Welcome Ben Bailey to the Board of Adjustments. I'm really, really excited about the Parks and Arts Commission events that are going on. I'm going to spend at least a half an hour putting things in my calendar for this summer and that's an incredibly wonderful feeling to have some things to do. And then, of course, I have to take a minute to thank the dispatchers. They work so hard down there. I was just having a conversation with someone today around lunchtime about the dispatchers and how their job isn't really anything that anyone understands until you spend some time down there in that room with them and how incredibly stressful it can be because it goes from zero to 90 in a half a second when that phone rings sometimes. Of course, from the bottom of my heart, I have to thank them for being the lifeline for our men and women on the streets, both our officers and our firefighters for Raymore and surrounding communities. And then, of course, for taking care of our citizens. You know, that's what they're there for, taking care of the citizens as well as the men and women on the streets. So, like I said, from the bottom of my heart, I thank those dispatchers for the work they do every day. We're thankful for, also for our animal control department. As Chief said, definitely a shining light in the workers of our city. They work so hard. They give and give and give of themselves. I know they spend their own money on things for those animals. I know oftentimes they spend a little extra time caring for them and trying to socialize them, working hard with community members also to volunteer to socialize the animals and care for them. And so forgiving their time and their efforts on their hearts, I know they work really hard in animal control as well. So I think that's all. All my crazy notes are on my paper. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Mr. Barber?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with everything you've said so far and I would like to congratulate all the council members that were elected and reelected. It's great to keep the team together. I proudly serve with this group and I want to thank the voters of Ward Three and the residents of Ward Three. It's an honor to serve and I know we're going to, the next couple of years, we're going to get, get a lot more done. Mr. Catterett, I have a feeling this year your reports are going to get longer and longer and that is always good news. I mean, you really do make me smile when I hear what's going on. I'll get a little melancholy here. The Arts Commission was established, I believe, in 2015. It was right when I came on the council. And there's some folks that are not on the council now and there's some folks that aren't around anymore and their dream was this. I mean, this is what they wanted to see from the Arts Commission and that was long before the amphitheater and those type of things that we have right now. So getting over COVID, getting back to normal, this is really great and I'm, I'm glad to be a part of this. So great job Art Commission, great job Parks and Recs. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holman?
Thank you, sir. I think congratulations go without being said to good people who ran, good people who served and have served the city for some time. What a great place to live, what a great time to be here. All of you in this room and those that aren't here should sleep well tonight. When somebody asks you tomorrow what you did, we gave the citizens what they asked for. Number one, I believe, on the citizen survey, number one in the community conversations, they wanted events, they wanted entertainment venues. This is fantastic work. This is great stuff, all right? Things are so good that we are advancing projects on the GO bond. I think we heard three or four of them tonight. One of the things that Mr. Catterett said is coming soon, Dr. Carroll's subdivision, for lack of the appropriate term, is going to go behind that school over there in Timber Creek. That school, as I recall, was one of the most packed elementary schools we have. So when those houses go in, that means more growth for the school district and we're going to have to continue building that, which is another thing that builds on our success. This body and everyone in here is true to heart. You all are here for the right reasons and you're doing the right things. I applaud all of you. It's a great place and a great time to be here. Thank you.
Amen, Jay. Thank you. Mr. Serko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, kind of on the same subject matter here, congratulations to the four candidates who ran and won. Glad to have you back. We're, we're a good group, a good family. We're, we're good with the city. The city works with us and it's a great thing to have you guys back. Thank you. I want to say thank you to, congratulations to Erica Hill on your award. Congratulations, it's a big award. Thank you. Mr. Bailey on his appointment. It seems like he's going to be jumping into a meeting really quick here, so that's pretty good. To the parks and the music and to Nathan, we finally talked about this, the amphitheaters, getting trucks, getting people out. Man, you kind of come out and blowing this thing out of the water this next summer. It's a, it's a great thing. People want it. I'm really happy to see that coming forth. Congratulations to our dispatchers, they're awesome. They work so hard, they're right on top of everything continuously. And our ladies there in the animal control, they're fun. I've worked with them on a number of occasions. They're really, they do their due diligence, they do a great job and they're always there when you want them, you can count on them and that's a great thing. They're doing a great job, all of them. So again, all that, congratulations, we are a great family, are a great city, a great group here. Congratulations all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to congratulate everyone that, that either won or ran for an office. Anyone that puts their name in the hat certainly puts themselves out there and, and it's, it's definitely something that can be scary to do, especially for the first time. Want to appreciate all the voters that came out from Ward Two. There were a lot, I, it's possible that it was the largest turnout for Ward Two municipal election in 10 years. I know it is since around 2013, but in, and I looked at it, there, there were people that voted that I had never met before and to me, that's an opportunity to find them and find what things we can do for them to make them continuing to be happy with our city. I want to congratulate Ben Bailey for coming on board with us and we met through scouting and, and I know he exemplifies all the tenants of scouting. I had an opportunity today. This is something a little different. I got to substitute for Todd Schnacki, who's been a theater teacher for probably, well, at Raypack since mid-'90s, and he's one of the few people that's been there longer than a couple of us, old veterans. But what was cool, because it was theater classes, I got an opportunity to talk to kids that I don't meet very often, and I was talking about all these things that we have going on, and I'm like, hey, you know, I think there are opportunities for really good bands, but there are some bands out there that just need a gig, and if we could get some opportunities to, you know, set up some other smaller events, I'm sure people would love to get out and just have an audience. People are hungry to get out and be amongst the different people in our city and celebrate again together. So the kids were really excited. They were... I said, you know, there's all kinds of opportunity with this amphitheater. Just whatever we can think of is the limit, and if we keep thinking, we can come up with even more. So that was really cool. A lot of those kids were, you know, juniors and seniors, and they're going to be part of our voting citizenry very soon as well. So they were really excited. They're like, oh, wow, we're doing all this and this and this. And it was really fun to promote the city to people that hopefully will get a chance to use it before they go off and decide, do they want to come back and live here as adults? So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacobson?
We've had this discussion about bringing up a tail end of this council, haven't we? So I'll try to make it brief. First of all, I agree with everything that's been said here. I do want to also congratulate all my fellow council members who ran and are back on the council, and I also want to let the council members that are here already, let them know I'm looking forward to working with you again. This is a great council. We have, you know, a single focus in terms of... The term that came to me through this entire process was quality of life. You know, the high quality of life that we want to bring to the City of Raymore and the residents of Raymore, and I think we do it, and I think we exceed. Now, I say "we," you know, the credit, of course, goes to these people sitting out here and in extension to people who are working for them. And it was an honor to run. It's an honor to win, and as I said at the forum, my plan of putting my shoulder to the rock and helping push it up just like everybody else. So I don't want to be the weak link in the chain. Thanks to all the voters who came out. I had the opportunity to be at the rack all day. As you may remember, it's a very nice day to be out. Got to meet a lot of people, got to hear a lot of stories. As you said, Councilman Burke, you know, you hear things that you don't normally get to hear. The other thing that was inspiring to me there was, of course, there's a couple of different precincts there, but I got to see a lot of people showing up to vote who would have broken legs or they would have to be in wheelchairs or they would have to be in some fashion. And it's a fairly, for them, a fairly lengthy distance from the parking lot into the rack, but they still found a way to get there. They still found a way to get in, and they were going to vote. I was really inspired by that. That was really awe-inspiring. Back to what was... And so actually, let me back up and say thank you to all of you who did vote for me. And whether you did or you don't, I represent Ward One. I represent the city, and I'm always around to talk to whoever wants to talk to me about whatever the issues are. I'm just going to say ditto on the National Public Safety Communicators and the Animal Care and Control Appreciation. You know, I've seen animal care at work, and I'm aware of what the telecommunicators do as well. But I've seen them at work, and they do a fantastic job. Those are the sorts of things that kind of fly under the wire, I think, that we don't think about. When we think of quality of life, we're thinking about other things, for instance. And of course, my next segue is into the summer events, Mr. Mustine and the art council is putting on. I'm really... You just get the feeling that spring is here and freedom's finally here again. You're going to get to get out and enjoy that. Mr. Catterett, I'm really impressed with your report this evening, especially since I'm having a lot of conversations with people discussing the cost of building materials and finding houses and that sort of thing. So for you to have a report like that with a number of houses that are coming in, that's very impressive. So I was really happy to hear about that. And I think that's about it. The other thing I was going to say, Ms. Hill, excellent job this evening. I know a lot of people probably don't realize this was your first time with that, but you did an excellent job this evening. For the first time, I was actually able to get through the first part without kind of laughing in my head. I was, since I've ever been sworn in, and this is kind of the warped humor of mine, whenever I hear "I state your name," I think of Animal House. It's always tempting to say "I state your name," but I try to keep it decorum, sir. Anyway, so that's all I've had. Thanks to all of you. I'm really looking forward to working with this council again. Thank you, sir.
Amen. Mr. Townsend?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate my peer council members for their reelection. This particular election was rather interesting for me in that it was eye-opening with regards to the different ballot initiatives that we had on there. There were several. And before I proceed, also to our communications department as well as our animal control and Mr. Bailey for your volunteering, coming on and supporting the community in a voluntary manner. So I want to applaud all those activities, all those actions on impact, as I would say. But this particular election cycle was rather challenging in regards to... There's been several things since I've been in my short time on council. As I look at the landscape of the dais and those who've been on city council for several years and have gone through different things, different hot-button items that have come across the council, whether it be a TRAS contract or whether it be pick an item that comes up that really gets the community going and those that want to find their councilperson and talk, you know, initiative. And this particular one, we had our use tax on there, and I was, as the results came in, I was like, oh, that didn't hit the mark, despite our best efforts with a 90-page, very informative packet that was available to the public, that was very transparent, that really detailed the need for our community, that looking in the out-years, as we heard tonight from our growth as soon to come, that we definitely need those resources to help sustain the level of maintenance and protection of our community, that we definitely need that without doing the alternative of raising taxes, which is never a good thing in any capacity. But that didn't hit the mark, and we'll try and we'll do our level best in some future case, in some future state, to do things. But one thing I did past couple of weeks in my attempt to make sure I stay as proficient as my peers as well as the staff in reading and educating myself in the capacities of different things I do, I ran across one little thing in a particular slide deck that was very poignant and really spoke to what I was feeling and kind of what's, you know, the atmosphere, I would say, following the election. And it is the fundamental ethical question of politics. And I know we kind of say that as city council members, we don't get into politics. We're more public service. But in these multiple hats you have me serving on the KCATA and other things, I find that I have to politic a little bit when I talk to different people. And the comment here is, how do we ethically protect the social cooperation that makes our society cohesive and strong while also respecting the rights of individuals to pursue vastly diverse visions of a good life and a deeply conflicting moral and political beliefs? That gets to no new taxes. You know, even though this wasn't a new tax, it was, and we weren't raising any taxes. It was just looking at an opportunity to serve our community in a better capacity for resources that we just didn't have access to. And this, you know, really spoke to me in that regard in how I see my role on council, and I'm sure my fellow council members also see, that we're trying to do just that, maintain that social cooperation, but understand that there's a deeply conflicting moral and political belief system out there, and we can't please everybody. You know, we just can't do that. And that's one thing that I have keenly become aware of. You can't please everybody, but you're trying to do your level best to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to live in a cohesive society in a way that's respecting everybody's rights to their belief system. So I'll continue to do that, and I'm sure my peers, and I welcome you back to the dais. I look forward to working with you in the different capacities that we serve our community and looking forward to it. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Well, Dale, you're right. It's tough to follow eight people who've already eloquently said the things I had written down here, but you know what? There's no sense going back over again. Great job on talking about public safety and our dispatchers. I fully agree with you, Jay. Great job talking about the community and what we're doing and providing. Everyone did a great job tonight expressing their thanks and support for the staff and the city. But Brittany, we didn't forget you. Welcome to the council tonight. Great job. I know you're just getting your feet wet here to help Erica out, and you did a good job tonight. So keep it up. And Erica, again, congratulations to you. I know that was a lot of work. You're a tremendous asset to us. So thank you. And just ditto to what everybody else said. So anyway, that's all I have for this evening. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Townsend?
I move that we adjourn the city council meeting for April the 12th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, sir. I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holman. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn from the Raymore City Council Special Meeting for Monday, April the 12th. Any further discussion? All those in favor?